Okay, go ahead and call speed and order. First item is roll call.
Alderman West.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Edley.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Armey.
Here.
Okay. Uh, next item is invitation led by Daryl Jones from Crossroads Church. Be followed by pledge allegiance from Girl Scout troop seven.
Well, let's pray together. We give you thanks tonight, uh, dear Father, for another day, uh, for breath, uh, for freedom and for life. And, uh, we never take that for granted. Every day when we wake up and every night when we go to sleep, uh, help us to be grateful, uh, for what you've blessed us with. And I thank you for our community, for these leaders, for our city employees and city staff, uh, for these elected officials. Not enough rewards in heaven, uh, for me to do one of their jobs, but I thank you that you've enabled them and called them to do it. And, uh, and I just thank you for the work that they do, uh, and the work that they'll do tonight on behalf of our community, not only for us today, but for our future, the future of our community, for the future of these girls, uh, that are part of our Girl Scouts here tonight, and, uh, and for the future of this city. And we pray it all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Okay. Next item is approval, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
No, no cases? All right. Got motion Alderman West, have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Arnold.
I'll fair to say aye.
Aye.
All votes same sign. Next item is proclamations. We have Eagle Scout six ninety-two. We have, uh, Thomas Flee, uh, Spencer Porter, and Joshua, uh, Schout here. I can have them come forward.
Proclamation, whereas Thomas Flee, Spencer Porter, and Joshua Schout have distinguished themselves while obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout, Boy Scout troop number six nine two. Whereas Thomas, Spencer, and Joshua have been recognized in this area for their outstanding community service, leadership skills, positive attitude, and academic achievement. Whereas Thomas, Spencer, and Joshua have proven to be an asset to the Green Valley community, their troop, family, and friends. Whereas Thomas, Spencer, and Joshua have set an example for others to follow and have distinguished themselves, their troop, and their community with this award. Whereas the City of Green Valley would also like to recognize Thomas, Spencer, and Joshua for their outstanding achievement in becoming an Eagle Scout. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of Green Valley, Board of Alderman, and Mayor Mike Todd are proud to recognize Thomas Flee, Spencer Porter, and Joshua Schout for achieving scouting's highest honor bestowed, the rank of Eagle Scout. Awarded this tenth day of October two thousand sixteen in Green Valley, Missouri, Mike Todd, Mayor.
They want to make sure all the pictures are done. Yeah. Okay, next item is citizens' participation. Uh, we ask that citizens come forward to the podium and microphone and give your name and address for the record. Have anyone who wishes to address the board of TV?
See now move on to consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have motion Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Drive a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Arnold. Any discussion? See now, no fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes same sign. Okay, under previous business, we have Sugar Shack.
Just a brief update, uh, I followed up, whatever it was I told you I would last week with the Department of Revenue. We received some documents regarding the payment of the sales tax, which still hasn't been paid, um, and there's, there's a timeline to do that. Um, state off, I don't, I didn't hear from anybody today, state offices, I guess, are closed, but I have an email into the, uh, Department of Revenue person who's dealing with Sugar Shack here, so I'll keep you posted, keep my eye on you, posted.
Any questions about that? All right. Uh, see now, new business, we'll move on to presentation. We have the ICMA TV video production.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, about three or four months ago, the city was notified that we were selected, uh, as one of the representative cities for ICMA. And based off of that, they wanted to do a TV portion about the features around about, uh, on ICMA TV. It's a pretty good deal, very big honor. Six cities internationally every year to focus or feature at the ICMA International Conference, and then this video can be used for recruitment, uh, for economic development, any host of things, we could use it, uh, just to showcase our community to other cities. So, we're actually going to, um, show you the video right now, and then tomorrow, we're gonna, uh, post it, we'll upload it to YouTube, and then post it on Facebook. And this video will be, uh, or if you remember, last year, we did the drone flyover video for economic development. So, this video that we just completed is actually going to complement that when we have site selectors, uh, looking at Green Valley. This will be kind of, uh, more of a operations governmental type video instead of just development focused.
Green Valley truly has a worldview, but it is, it's been hard to have a large much quality.
Green Valley is my home, where I'm growing up, where my kids are growing up, so I think it's a great place, and everyone looks to pitch to a great place, and I'm the bottom one doing what's best for the country. Green Valley's been with the past, it's running through, it's been very.
We went from, uh, population base of forty-nine hundred to, uh, hurricane levels, two levels, three levels. One of the things that we're focused on right now is that we're trying to make sure that we're improving our infrastructure and public growth that we have.
I think the city has been very focused the way they should be. To see the city grow, to get away, it will benefit for the future.
One of the things that we've been able to do is start an economic development corporation that's very focused on, uh, innovation of the businesses, how to help them grow smarter and faster.
Our city council here in Green Valley is from development. They, uh, recently appropriated money for our new, uh, director of economic development, and he's been very active in recruiting facilities, the smoke lift, that large project on Z-5 Town, he's had a great asset in, in luring those companies in. The property there is a large track ground on the northern side of Green Valley, roughly about fifteen hundred acres, with cattle, still the bees, likeable water, gas, all power we need with projects, still do nothing with all more facilities, I mean hotels, after more residential, and other industrial companies, buildings, that company will come to pay dollars for it.
Another feature that I think is a key area for in Green Valley is, is the access to interstate economy. Interstate economy is a lifeline of freight and traffic in the United States. It goes from coast to coast, and it literally runs right through to Green Valley. It's a huge user for this area.
All four corners there, the I-70 and forty highway are just private development. Several years ago, we've got water, fuelers, water, gas, electricity.
We invested, uh, over thirty million dollars in capital infrastructure around the four corners.
Many good very proactive in all four corners of development right now.
From Columbia, Missouri to Manhattan, Kansas, along I-70, that is considered the animal health corridor, where the vast majority of, uh, animal health science research developments is done, and with the historical time our harms that we have in the City of Green Valley, we like to name this as the birthplace of animal health corridor.
Roy Rockhill Nelson, who founded the Kansas City Star, purchased seventeen hundred and fifty acres of the time of our farm since nineteen twelve.
Roy Rockhill Nelson started Time of Our Farm as kind of an experimental cattle raising. Uh, they were trying to raise other, uh, decent sized other cattle.
The Time of Our Farm is one of our great assets. Very recently, the City of Green Valley acquired fifty-five acres for future development, which will continue the history of that great farm, to be developed very strategically to benefit all of the citizens.
One of the great things in the City of Green Valley is the Green Valley School District, which is one of the fastest growing school districts in the city.
We have forty-three hundred students in our school district this year. Our student population has doubled in the last twelve years. The Washington Post has again recognized Green Valley High School as one of America's most challenging high schools, placing us in the top five percent of high schools in America. They get that recognition primarily for the performance of our students on national advanced placement exams, for the volume of students that are taking those exams, and for their high performance on those tests.
The City of Green Valley has impressive leadership from the elected officials all the way, uh, down to the supervisors that, that make decisions every day for our front line employees. Everybody seems to be on the same page. They see the vision of Green Valley, they see the growth happening, and that's very exciting and inspires our supervisors, our managers, all the, all the way up to myself and the elected officials, doing that thing every day.
So, we just wanted to make sure that we showcase that to the board, um, kind of brag about it. That video was made in partnership with the EDC, uh, the EDC actually, uh, had donations that were solicited, uh, for, for the project. So, Alan Lefkoe, Jim Kissick, uh, David Ward, um, Oida, Cam Row, uh, feel like I'm missing someone, but I wasn't prepared to rattle off the entire, the entire list of, of folks. So, uh, it was a great partnership project, and, uh, like I said, I wanted to just make sure that the board saw it before anybody else in the public did get to it. We fortunately, uh, got the production of this, the final production, the morning of, um, a big site visit that we had in Green Valley, so we were able to show that to the site selectors and the company that would come to town, um, and time has worked out perfect on that, so. It's been world premiered now. Throw it up on Facebook. It will be on ICMA, uh, ICMA's website, which they say it'll get approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand views per year just on their website, um, very weighty profile.
Next item is ordinances.
Your Honor, the first bill is Bill B sixteen dash nineteen, first reading, it's on the agenda for two readings tonight. First reading, an ordinance finding that Green Valley Marketplace Neighborhood Improvement District improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications, portioning the final cost of the improvements among the properties benefited by the improvements, and assessing the final cost of the improvements in special assessments against the property described in the final assessment role. First reading, Bill B sixteen dash nineteen.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill B sixteen dash nineteen for its rea, first reading and bring it back by second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman West to approve Bill B sixteen dash nineteen for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading. Drive a second.
Aye.
Second Alderman Johnston. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, we've actually got, uh, Joe Lauber here to go over a few things related to this and the next item, uh, on the agenda. Joe, I think, yeah. Just right button, and it'll take you back to court. Excellent, thank you.
Mayor, members of the board, good to see you this evening. First of all, that video was really something, uh, you know, and I, I guess, just, you know, makes me just, you know, want to say again, thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to work with you on your economic development, uh, special counsel work for the last eight years. Pretty excited about, uh, the things you guys have, uh, lining up right now, so, uh, I think it's gonna be a, uh, you're gonna see some neat things happening, so. Uh, part of that, uh, we have this evening.
I'm gonna have, have this, have your, have your sound, please. More than.
You all may, uh, recall, and I think most of you were here at the time, but, uh, back, uh, on August thirtieth, twenty-ten, the Board of Alderman approved the Green Valley Marketplace TIP Plan. A component of financing for that plan was the Neighborhood Improvement District or NID, N-I-D, uh, financing for certain public improvements within that TIP redevelopment area. Uh, NID financing, uh, ha, has a procedure that's completed essentially through a series of four ordinances, then plus any ordinances that you might need to effectuate the actual issuance of the notes or bonds, uh, type of financing that you're doing. We're here this evening, uh, to introduce the final ordinance in the NID process and to begin the process for permanent financing of the NID improvements through the issuance of NID bonds. So, this is by way of a quick background, uh, I'll remind you that the NID was created by ordinance number twenty-one-ten on September twentieth, twenty-seventh of twenty-ten. Uh, that ordinance also determined the advisability of the project and ordered that plans and specifications be drafted for the, uh, project improvements. Fast forward to November eleventh, twenty-eleven, the Board of Alderman adopted the second ordinance, ordinance number twenty-one-eighty-seven. That ordinance determined that the plans and specifications that have been drawn up were proper and complete. It declared that the non-tax exempt parcels within the Neighborhood Improvement District or NID District, uh, uh, would, would benefit by the improvements. It ordered the preparation of a assessment role, and it directed the notice of a public hearing on plans and specifications for the assessment role. That public hearing was held on December twelfth of twenty-eleven, and on January ninth, twenty-twelve, Board of Alderman adopted the third ordinance in the process, which is ordinance number twenty-one-ninety-nine. That ordinance ordered the improvements to be, uh, com, uh, constructed and completed. It directed the short-term financing for the, uh, improvements plus maintenance, those were NID notes, and it approved the assessment role and ordered that assessment role to be recorded with the Jackson County Recorder of Deeds. On May thirty-first of twenty-twelve, the city issued three point zero one five million dollars in temporary notes to finance the construction of the NID improvements. Those notes were set, were set to mature on June first, twenty-fifteen. On May twenty-ninth of twenty-fifteen, the city extended those two thousand twelve notes for eighteen months by additioning addition, by issuing additional notes in the amount of three point one two five million. This leads us to the introduction of tonight's final NID ordinance, that, that final step in the process. The ordinance before you this evening, uh, makes a finding, has you making a finding that the NID projects have been completed. This would apportion the final cost of the projects among the benefiting properties. It assesses the final cost of the special assessments against the property, and it orders the city clerk to provide the statutory notice of the special assessment and giving the property owners the opportunity to pair, to pay either in a one lump sum or to have their, uh, uh, assessments assessed, uh, done in a special assessment, uh, annually over, uh, a nineteen-year period that begins next year in, in twenty-seventeen. It's a twenty-year bond, we're so late in the year this year that we can't collect the, the special assessment, we're past the, the timeframe to get that set, and so it's, it's essentially gonna be nineteen years starting next year. Uh, in front of you in the handout and on the screen, uh, you have here a summary of the final, uh, assessment. So, uh, as I mentioned, the statute says that we have to provide a notice that allows the property owner to make a one lump sum payment ahead of time, or they can then, or they can finance the cost of these special assessments over the, the twenty-year period. What you see on the screen here is, uh, the fact that if all of the assessments, if the property owners elected to pay in a lump sum, those property owners would be paying about three point one four million in total. And then you see the breakdown there, Casey's has about nine percent, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand star acquisition. Our new developer out there has about one point nine eight million, sixty-three percent of the, the total cost. Green Valley Marketplace Cinema has eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, or about twenty-seven percent, and, uh, JPNF, which is a portion of the, uh, the hotel property that's out there, has about thirty-eight thousand, they were paying a lump sum, okay? Um, the, uh, the property owners who are electing to pay by lump sum in the notice that we will provide them will be directed to make that lump sum payment on or before, uh, October twenty-fourth of twenty-sixteen. Why? Uh, we need to get through this process to get the bonds issued, uh, because the bonds, the, the, uh, to get the bonds issued, take out the temporary financing, the notes that have been extended are set to mature on, on December first of this year. So, we're working towards, you know, getting the, the bonds marketed, and we need to know how much we're gonna be, uh, financing through the bonds, because it, it, as to the extent that people make a lump sum payment, it's going to reduce down the amount of bonds that have to be issued. At this time, we have, really only have information from Casey's that they're interested in ma, in making that lump sum payment. Uh, they had kind of said that from the beginning, whenever they got involved in the project themselves. They don't really like to do these kind of deals, and they don't want this hanging out there, so they wanna take care of that. We've been in contact with their general counsel, we're working through the issues with that, and, and we should have an answer on that shortly. Obviously, they'll have to pay by October twenty-fourth, if that's just what they elect to do. If the property owners do not elect to pay in a lump sum payment, then the lower part of your, of your handout, what you see on the screen here is that the, uh, they would then be, uh, given special assessments annually, uh, for nineteen years, starting in, uh, twenty-seventeen, because of the way the notices work for the county collector to be able to collect those, those taxes. Or, the, special assessments are not taxes, they're in the nature of taxes, but they, they're collected along with property taxes. So, you see here, the cost, uh, goes up to three point four million dollars in this circumstance. Why? Because it's gonna include, you know, not only the bond principal, but you're gonna have, uh, annual maintenance, paying agencies, other, you know, you know, and cost provisions, those types of things will be wrapped into that as a part of the financing, obviously. So, again, about three point four million dollars is what you're looking at, uh, if they decide to spread that out over time. And then we're gonna be somewhere in the middle probably, because, you know, assuming that Casey's does make its lump sum payments, we're gonna be, you know, somewhat maybe short of that three point four, but, you know, we won't know until, uh, you know, Oc, October twenty-fourth comes and goes. And so, uh, again, those will be paid out, uh, y, you know, in basically equal installments over that nineteen-year period starting next year. I did want to bring one item, uh, procedural item to your attention. Uh, we did have to make requests of waivers to some, to the property owners, uh, in, in this, uh, uh, process that we're going through. The NID Act allows up to ninety days after the date, uh, that the notices or the final assessments go forth, for those owners to file suit to challenge the, uh, uh, the special assessments. We started gearing up this, this process in mid or late August, and it kind of dawned on us that, you know, this is stretched out over the last five years, we really should have started the process a little bit earlier, because we can't get to a point, uh, you know, to allow three months to pass, once, once we've gotten, gotten through the, the, uh, the process for getting the, the notices out, you know, you know, before the, uh, the bonds mature. So, we worked with bond councils, what they suggested, and what we've done is we sent requests to those property owners for a waiver of their, of their notice period, uh, to, uh, to, uh, allow us to go forward with the issuance of the bonds. And so, if you hear anything on that, that's what's going on with that. Um, the, uh, those requests have gone out. Um, the waiver also, uh, allows, uh, contains a provision that allows the city clerk to send the notice of the final assessment via email transmission just to expedite matters. We want to get the notice to them as quickly as possible. We've been in contact with the property owners already, they know these are coming, we've, we've actually been in contact with them for, you know, at least probably about two weeks, ten days, uh, ten days or two weeks, uh, something like that, and they're aware that this is coming. Um, but, uh, we do need to, to move that forward. Um, if the, if the property owners choose not to sign the waiver, and we're, we're put in a position where we can't issue the bonds because of this, then what we'd have to do is an extension on the notes. Um, we think that the property owners probably would not do that, just because it's just gonna add additional costs and, and additional interest to what they're already paying. So, most, everybody, I think, is, is gonna go along with this, because anything beyond that will, uh, will extend, uh, will increase the, the pricing or anything like that. So, um, I think we've got, we've got a, a problem, and we've got a solution, and we're just working that, uh, out with the property owners. Um, and with that, uh, that's everything that we have for you this evening. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer those.
What's the interest rate?
Do we have an interest rate yet? The bonds have not been marketed yet, so we don't have an interest rate on the bonds themselves. Uh, so right now, we're in the, we're, what, what you're being cons, what you're being asked to consider tonight is an ordinance that would, would essentially authorize us to go forward and do the marketing of the bonds. You also have a bond ordinance that's on after this one, uh, that would be in that process. And so, we won't know what the market will bear until that gets marketed by the bond underwriters.
So, these are general obligation bonds? Is that what they're gonna be, or what are they gonna?
These, these are limited general obligation bonds, they're payable from, uh, special assessments that you see here. Okay, he's gonna bail me out here.
Yeah, so, yeah, they look at general obligation bonds, which means that they're backed by the city's full state in credit and the tax, and the tax authority, but you are not allowed to raise taxes, uh, without over the people to pay them, um, so therefore, that's what's called a limited general obligation, that's what's called a general obligation, you have to pay these taxes if necessary. Um, you asked about the interest rate. One thing that's important to know about these are taxable bonds, so they will have a higher interest rate than a, than a, uh, a tax exempt bond, we're estimating about three point nine percent. Um, the reason they're taxable is very congruent with it. Um, basically, whenever you do a financing, the local government doesn't handle it, if you have private sources that are paying the debtors, and you pay for private improvements, then the tax code says that you have to pay. Uh, so, they're obviously, if you've got a private source paying for it, and you have private improvements that you built, it's not public and federal. Now, so you might say, wait a minute, these bonds, you've got special assessments, that's a private source, that's supposed to be paid by private individuals, but we built, you know, but we built all public improvements, so why are they taxed? Because when we did the overall financing for the entire TIP project, we had, um, private member of the TIP bonds help pay those private improvements out. So, when bond council looks at it, they look at the whole financing together, and when they look at it together, they see private sources, that's what I'm saying, in private uses, with the improvements out on, these are all private too.
And I could, I'd like to emphasize something that, that Tom, you know, pointed out to you, and that is, don't forget that this is part of an overall package that was approved for financing of the entire project, clear back in twenty-ten. You guys have already gone through three of the four steps of this, uh, just on the NID portion, the NID component of this, and so this is kind of, you know, rounding third base and coming into home on, on this particular financing, so, you know, there's nothing that is part and parcel with the entire deal that was done, you know, six years ago.
Okay. Uh, sorry, I'll get hit for extending the meeting, but, but, um, but, um, I, I just want to recognize what a tremendous success this program has been. And we went in, you know, obviously, we talked a lot about it a time ago, we were around at the time, talked about the natural risks that the city was taking, when you, when you, it was, it was a big risk, but...
The bonds have not been marketed yet, so we don't have an interest rate on the bonds themselves. So right now, we're in, we're, what you're being, what you're being asked to consider tonight is an ordinance that would essentially authorize us to go forward and do the marketing of the bonds. You also have a bond ordinance that's on after this one, that would be in that process. And so we won't know what the market will bear until that gets marketed by the bond underwriters.
So these are general obligation bonds, is that what they're going to be or what are they going to be?
These are limited general obligation bonds, they're payable from special assessments that you see here. Okay, he's going to bail me out here.
Yeah, so yeah, they're listed general obligation bonds, which means that they're backed by the city's full estate and credit and the tax authority. But you are not allowed to raise taxes without a load of people to pay them. So therefore, that's what's called a limited general obligation, that's what's called a general obligation, you have to pay taxes if necessary. You asked about the interest rate, one thing that's important to know about the least taxable bonds, because they will have slightly higher interest rate than a taxable bond. We're estimating about three point nine percent. The reason they're taxable is very congruent with, basically, whenever you do a financing, the local government does a financing. If you have private sources that are paying the debt service and you create private improvements, then the tax code says that you have to pay. Because obviously, if you've got a private source paying for it and you have private improvements that you built, it's not public and standard. Now, so you might say, oh, wait a minute, these bonds, you've got special assessments, that's a private source, that's certainly being paid by private utilities. But we built, you know, but we built all public improvements, so why are they taxed? Because when we did the overall financing for the entire TIP project, we had, private member of the TIP bonds had paid their private improvements out. So when bond council looks at it, they look at the whole financing together. And when they look at it together, they see private sources, that's what's happening, and private uses, there's improvements out on these other projects too.
And I could like emphasize something that Tom, you know, pointed out to you, and that is, don't forget that this is part of an overall package that was approved for finding the entire project in clearback in two thousand and ten. You guys have already gone through three of the four steps of this, just on the NID portion, the NID component of this. And so this is kind of, you know, rounding third base and coming into home on this particular financing. So, you know, there's nothing that's part and parcel with the entire deal that was done, you know, six years ago.
All right, maybe I'll get kicked for extending the meeting, but, um. But really, I just want to recognize what tremendous success is probably at this time. And we went in, you know, obviously, we talked a lot about it in time, you were around at the time, talked about the non-risk, the city was taking a new, new, of course, it was a big risk. But now, you have with the advent of the acquisition by a new developer and a new plan and a new redevelopment that you guys entered into, the city is now going to relieve of having to issue another three million in city-backed bonds. That's gone, we'll never have to do that. With the new construction that's already planned with the grocery store, we have every reason to be confident that the debt service on outstanding debt bonds will now be covered by project revenues. But they get paid first and then the developer gets to pay the open one. So that's a huge success. This, this project, which we were fearful at one point that the special assessments would be paid. As far as the reason why we extended the notes up to the last minute like we have, is we wanted to, you know, first get the developer and then give this developer a running head start to get their development in place before we start the assessments. But now we have every reason to be confident that the assessments are going to be paid. So this project, which, you know, got off to a bit of a shaky start, we knew we were taking some risks when we did it, but felt that we calculated risks, was now really turning into a big success. And I just, I guess I couldn't wait the opportunity to go by. And we didn't really talk about it when we did the, the plan amendment or when we approved the new TIP contract. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of point that out and celebrate our achievement of a really big success.
Do you have any additional questions?
I have a few questions. With all the success that you're talking about, when will we be reassessed for our ratings for the city?
Well, we've got a rating call about weeks into the. Um, I don't know that this will result in an increase in the rating for your general obligation bonds. We may see the rating come up on the TIP bonds, that's possible. But I think it might be a little premature. My guess is the rating agency is, you know, they sort of take a showing attitude too. You know, I think they'll wait and see, you know, wait for the construction to actually happen, see the ratings start coming in, seeing the excess coverage we have on the bonds, that's when they'll know that they're going to do a good job. Just remember that ratings are on issue, not the issue where. So the TIP bond has its own rating, you have a rating for your general obligation bonds, you have a rating for your general obligation bonds. They're not, it's not necessarily what you have for the city.
Thank you. Anything else?
Members of the board, I just want to point this out, that this is on the agenda for two reads tonight. The only reason that we're doing that is so we can proceed with, once this is approved and we actually set the final assessment roll, then we will be able to proceed to the next ordinance, which is for one read, authorizing the issuance and all of the processes that have to go along with that.
It also allows us to get that notice that I mentioned before out.
So the way to work on the bonds, it'll be the first reading of the bond ordinance tonight. After next, like I was scheduled meeting, we'll be coming to that point with the, with the bond purchase agreement for the actual sale of bonds and the exact terms of buying that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See nothing else, all fair people say aye. All opposed, same sign.
West.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Palace check.
Yes.
Six zero mayor. Oh, two reads, thank you. Second read. Bill, it'll be bill sixteen nineteen, it will be ordinance two three nine four. Second reading and ordinance finding that the Green Valley Marketplace Neighborhood Improvement improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans and specifications. Apportioning the final cost of the improvements among the properties benefited by the improvements and assessing the final cost of the improvements as special assessments against the property described in the final assessment roll. Second reading, ordinance two three nine four.
May I move that we accept the second reading of bill B sixteen dash nineteen, making it ordinance twenty-three ninety-four?
I have a motion, Alman West, to approve bill B sixteen dash nineteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-three ninety-four. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second, Alman Arnold. Any discussions? Seeing that, all fair people say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Palace check.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Johnston and West.
Yes.
Six zero mayor. Bill B sixteen dash twenty, first reading. An ordinance authorizing issuance of not to exceed three point four million dollars principal amount of Neighborhood Improvement District Limited General Obligation Bonds, Green Valley Marketplace Project, Series two thousand and sixteen of the Green Valley, of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. First reading, bill B sixteen dash twenty.
Mayor, I move that we accept bill B sixteen dash twenty for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alman West, to approve bill B sixteen dash twenty for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second, Alman Palace check. Any discussion? All fair people say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, first reading. Resolutions R sixteen forty and R sixteen forty-one. A resolutions by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley to approve the installation of the streetlight at the intersection of Northwest Cottonwood Drive and Northwest Cottonwood Circle and installation of three streetlights along Eagle Ridge Drive respectively. Resolutions R sixteen dash forty and forty-one.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution number R sixteen dash forty and R sixteen dash forty-one. That's rather.
I have motion, Alman Coleman, to approve resolution R sixteen dash forty and R sixteen dash forty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alman Hedley. Any discussion?
I have just questions about initial cost or inputting these streetlights from staff on, who covers that cost?
Yeah, so with these two resolutions there, existing subdivisions that were approved. So the Eagle Ridge Drive, that's the duplex units that Ward Development is doing just north of the industrial park. And then the Cottonwood is the most recent phase of Woodbury. So when the plans are approved, you know, they show streetlight locations on there. KCPN L won't actually help them put the lights out until, or up until the subdivisions are complete or nearing completion. That is told Alderman Arnold. When we have a new subdivision that comes in, we actually have a list of fees. And based off of what their plans show as far as, you know, fee of water lines, sewer lines, street signs, streetlights, there's a fee that they have to pay upfront to cover some of that cost. And then when we get to the point of actually putting the streetlights up, KCPN L sends us the information for the resolutions. And that's their okay to go ahead and do it. We don't actually pay KCPN L a fee upfront, they come and sell them and we pay our monthly fee. But we do try to recoup some of that money upfront when a subdivision is up.
Any additional, Cameron? Seeing that, all fair people say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero, H. Mayor. Resolution R sixteen dash forty-two. It's a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement for storm warning siren upgrades. Resolution R sixteen dash forty-two.
Mayor, I move we accept resolution sixteen forty-two, okay?
I have motion, Alman Arnold, to approve resolution R sixteen dash forty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alman Johnston. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is a resolution that we talked about during budget time. The storm sirens that we have in the City of Green Valley operate on battery right now. So for example, the batteries are charged from an alternating current source to plug in to the wall. And then whenever the sirens go off, the battery actually operates the storm siren. In this case, we'll be upgrading the storm sirens to run off of AC power by putting in a transformer. So they'll be able to run off of AC power until, and in the event that we had a power outage, they would be able to run up to fifteen minutes off of the backup batteries, which is a much better scenario than what we have right now. There were some times when we were going through test cycles where we were having problems with some of the storm sirens keeping a load for ten minutes. And so this is just one of the ways that we're able to update the sirens and make sure that they're there in case we need them and in the event of an extended power outage.
Have any questions? Seeing that, all fair people say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero mayor.
Next up, city attorney reports?
Nothing to report, Your Honor, thank you.
Next up, city administrator and staff reports?
We will start with Mr. Murphy.
I just have one thing, we don't have all the final numbers yet, but we have our annual house of house events event with partnering with Jackson County at their maintenance facility on Old Forty. It looks like we had somewhere around a hundred and fifty cars that came through. So not quite as busy as last year, but good turnout, seemed like everything went well.
Any questions for Ken? Mr. Daisy?
We are eighteen days away from Trail Retreat. The date is Friday, October twenty-eighth, starts at six thirty and basically until all the kids are gone. Hope that you all have that on your calendar, plan to attend. Now, city staff have been busy preparing for that event. Working on traffic control and parking as well as some of the scenes and decorations that we'll have along the trail. Right now, I believe we have around twenty-four to twenty-five vendors that are registered for the event. We're hoping to get at least a dozen more before that time. But we are looking forward to it, each year it's been a bigger and bigger success with more and more people coming through. So we're getting ready for it and we do have one more Board of Alderman meeting before that event, so I'll provide another update on October twenty eighth.
We don't have to compete with the World Series game this year.
That's correct.
Last two years we've had to.
Yeah.
No other staff reports.
Okay. Next up, Board of Alderman reports a comment, Alman Palace check.
Ken, I just want to say thanks for checking on all those streets. Um, when you looked at Lakeview and, did you, did you look at the very beginning of Lakeview? Did you see those holes there too? I didn't know if you, okay.
Yeah, there was a couple of things on Lakeview, that's where the sidewalk was too, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see, because I walked over there today and noticed, I mean, there's quite a few too, so anyway. That's it, thanks.
Alman Arnold?
One to pass on that I received a congratulations and thank you on Facebook about getting yard mode down on Cross Creek and I want to push that off of being back on the city staff and personnel that went out and made that, uh, installation that they cleaned up.
Ray, our codes officer has been working hard, you know, we kind of went through that stretch where it was really dry and nothing was happening. Now we've got the rain and the winters have come down, so it's usually kind of tailing off, it's kind of ramping back up. So he's definitely been busy, but.
Congratulations go to you, thank you.
All right, Alman Hedley?
Nothing to report.
Alman West?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alman Johnston?
Nothing at this time.
Alman Coleman?
Save the best for last, huh? Everybody got three things. I have, I know this was a little bit of a contentious subject some time ago about the logo. I don't know if you really caught from our EDC director's report in reference to the mock, um, person coming in and doing a mock, I don't know what you call it.
Site, thank you.
Site, is it, right. One of the big things that she pulled, or she told us was that the logo for our different, um, chapters here, where the city had a logo, the EDC had its own logo and the chamber has a logo. And she really felt that that was confusing to anybody that's coming to look at Green Valley. So I'd like to bring up at some point revisiting, pulling the logo together as one for all of those different entities. And so if we could, if we could talk about that again, I would appreciate it. The second thing is, um, the downtown area, and I don't know, maybe this has been discussed before, but it, there's not any lighting down in, down in the center of downtown. And at some point, I think we should talk about, at nighttime, it's very dark.
Yeah, so.
It's supposed to be at some, aren't they?
There, there's actually forty-two, I think, lights total. Because they're the kind that are like a long walnut. Um, KCPN L, this, the first phase, they kind of put everything in when they did the construction stuff. Then KCPN L just came out and set the poles and we were good, they apparently changed their policy. So now they come in on the tail end of it. Um, they have pulled, or called, was there a one call? And got the locates for everything out there. Uh, regular city engineer went with ODOT staff and actually marked where all the lights are supposed to be on the plans. So they shouldn't be going up any time now.
So that's forty-two more or forty-two total from ones that are already up?
Total.
Okay.
So you got to remember there, like the stuff on Walnut, it's not the big.
The ornament pull, pull, the glove on top there.
How many, how many do we have right now out of the forty-two?
None of those are up.
Oh, no, those are two, okay. So there'll be forty-two from Walnut down to Eagle Parkway then?
Yeah, it should all be that second phase.
I don't make a difference.
The twenty-one east side probably.
Good, thanks, Ken. And then the last thing is, as we're coming in from the north side of town going south on BV, there is a big dip in the road, um, right in front of Papa Murphy's. And I was just wondering if something could be done about that.
It is, it's actually the state part of the road, so we're, the last time they did a better job of, of doing it. But I think you're probably going to have to do something with the actual base because it seems to just settle over time. We'll check on that again.
Thanks.
Uh, next up, mayor's report, I have nothing additional to report. Exection session?
I'm not much yet, something here.
No? And how many of your execs goes anywhere? Well, if you have one, it's really warm.
We can throw one in there.
You have something there, Alman Palace check, we can do it, I mean.
I don't have a question there.
All right, well, no need for expection, we will adjourn.